Right, welcome. I hear my call to city council meeting to order. We will wait for five seconds since we've done it already. We did it in our planning session. We'll do a roll call, roll call please.
Here.
Isaac.
Here.
Brenda.
Here.
Here, we're all accounted for. And do we have any questions as far as the individuals who are online? That's who they are. I think the.
Who is B R D?
I think that's Ethan Salata. Thank you. I'm pretty sure it was, but yeah. We have any questions about anybody else on there?
Is there only three people?
Chief of Chambers. So now we have a roll call and all information about people who are online. We'll now do our approval of our minutes, August 3, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes as written from August 3, 2021.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any question or discussion that we'd like to have in regards to our minutes? Having hearing none, since we have an individual online, we'll just do a roll call for the vote.
Leslie?
Yes.
Approve.
Katie?
Yeah.
Roy?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the minutes have been approved and passed. Do we have any introductions other than maybe we'll have our city recorder introduce herself to.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Jen Rollins. I'm the new city reporter slash H R person for the city appointment. Good to meet everybody. Excited to be here.
Thank you. We'll go down to our financial report ending July 31, 2021.
Yes, we're going to have your 21 financial report. And because of the timing of last month's meeting, the bank has not issued their bank statements yet, and so that's why this is being. Nothing out of ordinary there when somebody has questions. I've got a couple of things to add at the August 31, 2021 financials. Any questions on July's? Okay, so.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I line item number 530, Sue Bond Fund. I see a lot of negatives in there in parentheses. Can you address that, please?
Um, yes, these two bonds, the 520 and the 530, that's the number of the fund in our system. Those were the two bonds that we had prior to our Geo bond, and these were the two that were refunded in the new Geo bond 2021. So final payments had to come out of these funds, so we made those payments out, but then this is why we budgeted for these two firms for this fiscal year is we're recouping, like especially from 530 that is in the negative status. So the city pretty much footed that bill. And so as the tax payments are rolling in, which are nothing nearly out this year, it's all prior year collections. So the people that are behind on their property, um, those payments coming in, which is the revenues received, will eventually catch that up.
And how long do you foresee that to be?
If not by the end of this fiscal year, probably the first part of the next fiscal year, so it's not too far into the future.
Any other questions before she moves on?
In our August, we report financial report. And I would like to report that we have received our our drawdown payment for or from the CDP grant, which is for our Boardman migrant head start project. That is still continuing and we're hoping it will be done right at the beginning of the fiscal year, but it just keeps one thing after another. It's dragging this project on and on and on. And we have paid the, there's two contractors, one for the site improvement and one for the actual building. We paid both of those contractors to keep them happy so we can finish off this project because the grant funding was lagging like we've all known with other state agencies, maybe because people are working from home. And so getting that payment was just taking a long time and these contractors were not happy. So this is, this has to do with timing. The city went ahead and paid them. We've received the bulk of the payment because if you can see the expenditure was 724,000. We have received 614,000 of that, but this is going to be coming here this month. The difference, if not by the end of September, at the very beginning of October, but that's just kind of the way things are with the state and all the COVID restrictions and working from home and so forth. But just want to point that one out. That's our migrant head start project. If you noticed last week and prior to the site was starting to look very overgrown with weeds, goat heads and tumbleweeds, that was cleaned up this last weekend and the landscaper is now here on site this week, finishing up the landscaping so that that doesn't kind of happen again. And they're thinking they may open up in January for students. They currently are having their students in Oregon, where the classrooms in AC Hilton. So they're hoping that over winter break, they'll move the classrooms over here and bring the kids over here starting in January. Some of the last project is the playground. That one is an issue also because of COVID. That may not be finished until April. So I said, you know, one thing after another, it just keeps extending this project's term, but we're getting there.
Thank you, Marta. Is there any questions or concerns about the, the financial reports that we presented today? All right, hearing none, we'll go to public comment. Renee, do you have something you would like to share today?
Yes, I do. All right. So we've got a couple of events coming up this week at the chamber. Tomorrow we have our monthly luncheon. That'll be at noon and will be virtual again this month. So that'll be on Facebook and we can provide a Zoom link for anyone who can't use Facebook. We'll have Dan Daltozzo from Morrow County Umatilla Head Start, and his presentation will be translated into Spanish. And then Chief Hughes will also be giving a presentation with updates on the new fire station. And then Thursday, we're having our second virtual event for the week, which will be a luncheon learn with Kevin McWorder, who will be discussing the seven talent trends that may be impacting your business. And this will be on Zoom. You can register and grab the Zoom link for that on our website, on our events calendar. And then next week, we have our first Chamber after five networking event that will be hosted by the Sage Center and we'll be providing light appetizers and refreshments. And this is a free event and you do not have to be a chamber member to attend it. Then Morrow County Harvest Festival is coming up on October 2 at the Sage Center. And this year they've added a Pinewood Derby races for kids of all ages. And if you don't have a Pinewood car, you can pick one up at the Sage Center store. And lots of our members are hiring. We've got over 40 different jobs posted on our website. You can get complete job descriptions for all of those on BoardmanChamber.org. That's all for tonight.
Renee, is there anybody else online that have, would like to have some public comment? Okay, having hearing none, we'll go down to action items and we'll do it to the ordinance 2-20, 22, 211. Yeah, I don't have my glasses. Easement, vacation, Northeast Columbia Avenue, the first reading.
Want me to read the title?
Yeah, I think that's.
I think that we need to have to have the procedures to have somebody make a motion to have it read and then second and then we read the title into the.
Is that what we do? We have a motion to be read?
And we read it.
And then we read it by title only and then we vote on it.
And then we don't vote on it. We just read it into the record and we'll have a second reading into the record.
That will be the next meeting.
And then we'll.
Perfect. I appreciate that. I really do.
I'd like to move that we have the ordinance number 2-21 read by final. And Boardman Vacating a Utility Easement Created on the Original Flat of the C Block Senior Industrial Park.
And that's all we do on that one?
Need a second.
Okay, so we do a first and a second to that. Okay. And that takes care of that ordinance for the first reading. Resolution 13-21 cities participation in the LLC legal advice program. So what's the correct way to do that one?
This one, then we can do a motion, a second.
We just motion in a second. Okay. Looking for a motion.
That we adopt resolution 13-21. A resolution authorized this case participation in the legal advice program. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes, and this year they're offering 15 hours free and before the other years it was 10. So they, they've been pretty successful with this and for the small communities out here in the eastern Oregon. This is a nice benefit to us.
Okay, so the legal advice program providing limited free legal advice to organizations located in these four. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any question?
I have a number of questions.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
They need to go through whoever the author of this exhibit needs to do their conventions. It says on the term at the bottom of the page, conditions as the LLC may determine to be necessary of advisable, I don't know if that should be if advisable, it identifies illegal city concerns, but it does not address the Boardman city concerns. And then.
You're going to have to be on sitting back where you're reading.
Yeah, I don't know where you're at either, Mr. Beagle.
I'm on Exhibit A. Under now therefore in consideration, obviously, we have number two term, the last sentence. It only identifies legal city and it does not address the Boardman city concerns. I feel that any term or any agreement that the city enters into, we should have a say as well.
Well, it says it in the previous sentence on mutual.
I think it should be addressed right there. Also on number nine, where it says notices to identify as a city manager, but the legal city, or a general counsel. I, I would like to see a specific person identified there. If we have to provide a name, I feel that they should as well.
Yes.
Perhaps we just need to leave this document evergreen without specific names and that position titles are sufficient.
If, if, if we're going to do that, give it a Karen's name. It should be the same for both parties.
I understand.
And then item number 14. It, to me, it sounds like it's a home court advantage. It says it's going to be Circuit Court for Marion County. Why does it have to be there? Is that where they are located? So they get the home court attorneys? I, I just questioned them. Those are all my concerns, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any discussion or comments concerning the concerns?
To Mr. Beagle's first concern, it's kind of like a question now that I'm seeing where his mindset. This agreement only covers a specific area for the help and no other topic can, we, we can't go with any other topic to the league and ask him for help on that. Is that correct? Does that make sense?
What was your question, Jen?
Well, I was talking to Karen and I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I, you know, I was reading through this and trying to understand it all, the motions. But this is only for a specific box that they're going to help us with and, and anything outside of that box, they're not, they're not, we don't, can't go to them for legal advice or anything like that.
Yeah, they're not my labor attorney or anything. I called them, here's the other day, what did I call them about? And like today, I would have called them about public notices. You know, you call, I call them just about things that I want to hear. Somebody rather than having to look it up, spend an hour or two on it.
So my, I'm so sorry. So Mr. Beagle's first concern then was mentioning that, I don't, I can't think of the phrasing again, but it was in the specifics of help and how they worded it, right, Mr. Beagle?
Well, it, it mentions the conditions and it was to be determined by and only identifies the legal city. And my question is, should it not also concern the city of Boardman? Shouldn't we be able to have to the legal city, this is our concern? So basically what you're saying is they get to determine whether we want it or not.
No, no, what I'm saying is they will only answer certain questions. If I really want other legal advice, I call my own city attorney.
And it's because of the inside the box analogy, I just.
This particular, this particular phrasing has to do with the length of the term of the service. So once you've exceeded your 15 hours, then the League of Oregon Cities has every right to delegate what the next term of service would look like.
Thank you.
And then you either agree to that term or you don't agree to that term. And if they want advisors in on it, they can suggest that you agree that, don't agree to that. But it is not about what we do after our 15 hours. Yeah. So that doesn't have anything to.
I wouldn't call them. Like, like last, when the planning commission, I had our city attorney, David Locke, join the meeting. I would not call them and ask them to do that. I mean, that's not, that's not the service to pay out.
Thank you. Any other discussion we have?
But if you were a small city, they would be a resource for you and they may even know who you should contact to get that information.
15 hours free time is one. I think that's a substantial amount and more than what I've learned is the usual.
Well, and the other day when I did email them, she emailed me back and she said, well, Karen, I can't tell you the answer because you have a spotty agreement.
Now that's funny.
But, and then went in.
And then answered it anyway, right? Yes.
Chief, I think to address the council's concern, when it's a general counsel, the League of Oregon Cities has numerous attorneys and whichever one gets assigned, that case would be the one that, that's why they needed to just general counsel.
In which case we should strike care, better than if you say city manager.
No, I'm kind of okay with that. I, I agree that it should say just the, the city manager.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share during the question?
It actually says in the very next statement, partners responsible for notifying one another of any change in the name or address to the use, to be used for delivery purposes.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Because we have a motion in a second. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Wesley?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yes, with corrections for conventions.
Katie?
Yeah. Do you hear?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're, we're stuck in it because he said yes with corrections and this motion is not with corrections. So you would, you would be no.
In that case, I'll vote no.
Yeah, he would be no. Because we didn't make the motion with the corrections.
Agreed.
And I would be yes. Thank you. So we're done with the ordinances and resolutions and that were to other business, appointing planning commission, vacancy term ending December 31, 2021. And in front of you, I do believe you have the two individuals who have asked to or reply, I don't know, replies, right, requested to be on that position.
Sure.
And so I guess what I'm looking for is some discussion on, as a council, uh, who we'd like to have on that position. Because it is my understanding that the mayor gets to choose that under the direction of the council. So I take your input and then I select that person according to the council rules. So I wanted to hear input from our council members on who they think should be in that position.
Well, since everyone spoke at once, I, I mean, if we're just going with what we thought, I was going to go and I was leaning towards Ethan. My thinking was kind of in the same school as Todd as me. Someone younger, he's been in the community, you know, X amount, and I know that he works with emergency response and I like that, that he's involved in the community and kind of looking to take his next step in how he can contribute and be a part of the community. That's where my head was. I know that Sandy has a lot of experience because of the experience that she has. So I understand that there's a lot of knowledge there that we'd be able to draw from, but I might take you giving someone a shot.
Mr. Beagle, I would go with Mr. Salata as well.
How about you, Brenda? What are your thoughts? And if I, and if I put you on the spot and you, and you don't want to answer, that's fine. I don't. This was for me and whether this is the right venue to do it, I just, you know, if.
I don't know, Ethan, and, and I appreciate hearing backstory that he, you know, he's part of the first responders who works in the community in that way. Sandy Toms also donates a lot of her time, works with the senior citizens and helps to manage some of their senior lunches and breakfasts and things like that. She's a dedicated person. But I also like the idea of bringing in fresh ideas, fresh experiences, but being somebody who has a lot of experiences and is still at the table, sometimes it's nice to have somebody who has been there and done some stuff. So I, I don't know. It would be hard for us to make a decision honestly. So good luck with that.
I appreciate your input. I really do.
I'm kind of on the same thinking as Isaac. I, I thought about this, being a newer council person in the last couple of years, you guys gave me a shot, you know, and I had never done this before. So I'm always up for people that want to get involved, you know, but Sandy does bring a ton of experience. She's very dedicated. And I, I, I probably have to lean more towards Ethan just to give somebody else a shock. Sandy has been involved for a long time, but I, I'd say, why not?
And I apologize for not calling Katie. I'm sorry.
It's fine.
I'm like, okay, you're, you're Norton. I'm not, I'm like in my classroom, I'm not looking at your name badge because I need to remember your name and I cheat. Listen.
Um, I would echo the sentiments of Councilor Arlen and Councilor Williams, and I think both candidates could do a wonderful job. However, I will lean toward Mr. Salata.
All right. So having here the council, yes.
Barry, would you tell them who all is on the planning mission now and what, what their positions are?
Gosh.
On the spot, there you go.
We just lost Adam Cole.
And Adam, okay, Adam was, is with the fire department and so was Ethan.
And so was Sam.
Yes.
Sam Myers is one of them that's on the planning commission. Ragnar Kenneke. Who? Ragnar Kenneke.
She was recently.
Harley Umidens.
Where did you hit Jennifer first?
Jennifer, Jennifer Layton. Jacob Payne is the chair.
Yes.
Karizi.
Zach Karizi. That's the sentence that we have now. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You didn't ask for Junior's.
I did not. Thank you. Junior, what, what is your input and thought process? Do you have, if you have any?
So I, I don't know Ethan. I kind of agree with everybody that given new members a shot at doing this is a great idea, but I do believe that Sandy Toms would be very beneficial for that position as well. So I guess I'm just going to leave it up to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I really do. I, I think I'm going to go with Ethan Salata. And we'll go with that. And I, I think that's all I need to do, isn't it? You're, you're going to, I'm like, you're like my double check day.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate it.
So we'll go into the record.
Congratulations, Ethan.
That'll be fun.
Okay. She's my double check one.
Perfect. All right. So you're double checked, that double checked. And that's great because my personality is, is if I'm doing something incorrect, I, I, I want to do it right. And so I don't take any offense of somebody saying, uh, we need to do it this way. And I really appreciate it because I, my goal is to make sure that we try to be as professional but get to it correctly. Thank you. Police report. Oh, you got something else? Oh, we need to do a motion in a second for that? I didn't think it said that in the, in the chart, in our charter, but I could be wrong.
Well, then I will move that you, Mr. Salata, comes the new planning commission representative of the term. Sir. Did it really say December 2021? Because it's like.
Oh, sure.
Yes. Adam, that's the end of Adam.
And then they, then they're, then they're, they'll be elected. It's an elected this.
Wants to, once his term is up, he can put in saying he wants to.
Oh, oh, I got you.
You know. Once his term is up, then anybody can, can.
Yeah.
Resubmit and we do this all over again.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I guess we need to do a roll call because we are on Zoom.
Okay. Leslie?
Yes.
Paul?
Approve.
Katie?
Yeah.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
He is.
Thank you. Double check in. We're ready to go on. Thank you. Police report, chief.
So that you should have a copy of the monthly report for August.
Mr. Mayor, a question.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Last meeting, I asked Captain Dieter if he could expand on misdemeanor arrests that were tripled from the, from in July versus the three previous months, if there were any causes or insights as to why they tripled.
I cannot answer that. I did not know that that occurred. So my, my initial response would be that you need to understand that every time we issue a misdemeanor citation, so if there's three charges on one person for a misdemeanor, each one of those counts as an arrest. So those numbers are going to be kind of skewed. And if you look at, if you go up under officer reports and then misdemeanor, you see that in July there were 21 misdemeanor reports, but those don't necessarily line up with the 20 or the 19 misdemeanor arrests. So again, those numbers are going to fluctuate. I apologize. I can't answer that question. I apologize. I can't answer that question. I will look into it if it's something that he'd be, again, this is informative. I appreciate that. I don't know that it's going to change those numbers. So.
No, I was just wondering if, if there was a significant cause or a specific, significant reason why, weather wise, party wise, COVID wise, you know, something along those lines.
So I, I, some of those, in fact, some of those are going to be. Well, I was, so this may shed a little light onto this too. We had, are there any other questions about that? And then I'll go into the next.
No, that was my only question.
Okay, so as a follow-up maybe to that question and to let you know, we have a large rash of graffiti that occurred in, in around Boardman and in the county. We, each one of those cases, they get called a report. Some of those are misdemeanor charges. Some of those are going to be felony charges depending on the amount of damage done. So we were able to apprehend this individual. We were able to get him on, on camera and video during the process. So he has been charged with a felony charge. Most likely a bunch of those misdemeanors will, it depends on how the district attorney wants to play it out. He could want, I, I kind of hate to see a 19-year-old kid get a felony record. But depending on his cooperation level with the other individuals that were involved, they may reduce those to misdemeanor charges. So those numbers can fluctuate based on what in the end is done. I, I would say a majority of those probably include the graffiti cases.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Police report. Having hearing then, we'll go to building department's report.
So I've been busy to the county.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to point out in the support, new home construction board just keeps on flooding away. Five or every month. Our members are consistently hired in the counties, so their projects are much better. So ours is primarily residential, whereas the county in North County is industrial. And with that, are there any questions?
Blue words.
Karen. Why is Kevin going to get that since he's on or?
What?
Do you want Kevin to do that?
I, Kevin, do you want to do the report? I thought he just usually just puts it in for.
Does anybody have any questions about the, oh, there it's unmuted.
I don't have it in front of me, but is there any question?
Yeah, I love it.
Can I thank you, Kevin, for putting down the previous meter reads or the previous number of meters? So.
You can thank Tony for that. She actually got that done.
Okay. Then I'm going to do this report. I, I think he listed all the things. The thing I wanted to say is that it's like everything, we're having trouble getting water meters now. That, you know, we put in an order for 10 and they said, oh, so sorry, we can ship you five. We've got 1,500 ordered. I mean, back for legal meeting. So you, you just take what you can get. So the other day, he, he has the ability, most of our water meters are like five eighths by three quarters. And so he had a chance to get 10, just three quarter ones. So I said, oh, you know, that sounds good to me. Make sure you just put them all in the new subdivision in a row so that we know, you know, that we don't think you're doing something wrong five years from now when we have to go look at them. Make sure they're consistent and mark it on your GIS. So they are really busy today. They were taking out the produce stand. They're next to the soccer slash pad. So those have, they all cleaned up and looking good. So, hey Kevin, I see you got something to say. Well, I guess you don't.
I think you said it all.
All right. So thank you. Appreciate that. We'll go on to, are there any committee reports? And having hearing then, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Okay, I reported about all, but I wanted you to know that the sanitary disposal is selling their business. And in my notes, I mentioned to you that the new company is called Waste Connections, and it is not part of waste management. You know, waste management is the big facility down in Arlington. And they're not the same company at all. So I think, and I, nothing will change. They'll, he said, if my head had told you, you would have never known. They're going to keep all the, try to keep all the same employees and same equipment and stuff like that. So we, and I put the agreement in just so you knew. How many towns, I guess, that they cover. So. Do I have anything else that I wanted to tell you about? Oh, I did, I did want to mention that the day Mike leaves and I went to that meeting, you know, the Hechner city manager had asked for some money for their discretionary fund. And so just as a bonus, they, and I gave you the, the sheet in your packet of how they broke that money down. And so we received 94,000 or 90 something, whatever. We've got a little more than that figure set. But anyway, so that was a nice bonus. We'll just put it in to work on the streets so that we can match that night. So, and you see that we get 107 vouchers in July. It was nearly as normal, but it was blazing hot for most of July. I think people are not working.
Our next one is October, isn't it?
November.
November?
And November is a really good month. Stuff. So it's. But I think everything else is will have, will happen.
The voting delegate to the LLC conference.
They canceled it. Oh, they canceled it, I guess.
But there's still a meeting that needed delegate for.
Oh, right. Okay. And see, I can't read. So anyway, is it okay if I'm the delegate? I'll tune, I'll tune in. Do they all see that thing?
Yeah, because they're doing on Zoom, aren't they?
Yes. And just the meeting. I mean, you know, they're not going to do.
They're not doing the whole thing. And then I just transferred. I just told them to think just bump over with it because I got the free, I got the scholarship. That's where I was looking forward to use it for the spring. So that was my plan.
Okay.
As soon as they schedule it for the spring, I can work it in the calendar. Second, Texas, make sure I have availability for it.
I think two things, two things. If you take the newspaper, in today's newspaper, the, there was an article about how great the Milton Free Water drug bust went. Rip, are you taking a nap?
I'm not.
Anyway, I just wanted you to know that our bench team people were involved in that. It wasn't all Milton Free Water or all of all of it. So we're getting, you see your money at work. So it's always good. The Family Dollar store over here next is, they hope to be open by the 18th. So I guess. The Family Dollar. So, and they, they see I've always come into work every morning now that they're getting trained. So that's good.
Good. Is there any counselors that would like to share anything with Dave?
Do we need to say that? We agree that Karen could be your voting delegate at the LLC conference?
I thought she was just going to be it because she was going to be there.
Sure.
That, I mean.
For the record, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. For the record, I honestly didn't think you guys say anything.
Sounds good to me.
She's just letting us know. We don't have to say anything. Okay.
She said she wanted and I didn't say no. So.
I nominate Karen.
And I don't have any, so not hearing anything for counselors. The mayor doesn't have anything either. Mr. Drago, do you have anything you would like to share?
Oh, only that I did talk to the PDI FAST group about the internet going in. And they said, if you had any questions, you could go online and give them your address and they could give you a pretty good idea of when you would be getting your internet on the loop between Main Street down Columbia and Boardman avenues.
Yeah, I put that in. They said it was going to be in January of 2021. It's still not here yet, but I'll put in another request. So.
We had a meeting with him the other day and he said that it has went really slowly downhill where you guys are getting the, because you're getting fiber to the home, you're getting the best of the deals.
Right.
But he said that it's been much slower than I expected.
And I, and I mean, they gave me the, the bid of what the cost would be and they pulled me and I, my name was in there. So I was like, well, it'll come when it comes. But yeah, so that's good information to be able to put on there. All right. I'm hearing everything. I hereby close this meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going to close the meeting and go, we're now going to go to executive session. Paper ORS 192.6602NI, city manager evaluation. So we're going to suspend, it's suspended meeting, pause the meeting, recess, recess the meeting to go into executive session or city manager evaluation. Yeah, any decisions will be made. If any decision are made, it will be in a public session. Is that correct? Junior?
Is there a Zoom number for me to get on?
I think what we'll do is probably call you.
Teacher. We'll go into the.
Did you hear me?
No, I can't. All I'm hearing is everybody else.
Okay, junior, I'm going to call you from the phone in the conference room.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We've come out of executive session. We'll resume our regular city council meeting of Boardman and no decisions need to be made. So we're going to close this meeting. We are going to adjourn this meeting. It is now adjourned.